I'm in my job start part and then right here I'm talking to my shoulder to start my hotline. Oh God, so I called the heart hospital clinic on Wednesday and they got me into a problem morning vacation.
Yeah.
And it looked at the little rock thing, so he's gonna run.
I got power on my computer, that's good.
He's gonna die, he's gonna be hollering.
Good evening, everyone. We always proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to, please feel free to join us.
Good to bow to you. Lord God, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, your mercy, and your wisdom. We pray, Lord, for our decisions tonight, we pray you'll be in your will and you'll take your efforts as we try to see what you want.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great liberty which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting order, Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Tucker?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the July 26, 2022 city council meeting. Any corrections, comments, or changes?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. Next up, we have Mr. Winningham with our monthly financials.
Evening, council.
Good evening.
Yes, sir, as Barry said, we're looking at July financials and again, numbers continue to be pretty good in the general fund. Our sales tax was up about 10% this month, year-to-date, we're up about 13. You can see just above that on the insurance tax turn back for lot fee, we've got our first month of revenue recognized there and you'll see that over the next probably three or four months. It'll take a little bit each month, it kind of helps cover the employer portion of our lot fee contributions. As a whole, you know, bottom line is looking good, $2.8 million net revenue and you can kind of look on the far right and see why for our revenues were above about where we should be this time of year, expenses were below. So, things are good and just to kind of keep us in reality, I hate to be a little bit of a downer, but just a reminder, if you go over to the next page, the fund balance appropriations, we've appropriated quite a bit of money this year and we've had some big things come up. Some of this funds have been spent already, the perimeter fence for police training, the second item that's been spent, and the Jim Pierce property for police department, that's been done. The construction of the fire station is underway, we spent about $80,000 on that so far, but we do have a majority of it to go, plus the additional $500,000 we appropriated for it. So, just keep in mind, things look really good right now, but we do have some large projects we're working on and I think at the end of the year, we'll still be, I think we'll still have a good year, but just wanted to keep that on everybody's mind. And that's the only comments I have, mayor, unless somebody has questions or comments.
I have one question. I'm back. This lawsuit, have we settled yet, or is your opinion?
I'd defer to Mr. Pinkin behind me on that one.
Make a motion to approve the monthly financials?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham. As long as you keep bringing up good news, you can keep coming up. Next, we have community development portion of the program, Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution asking the Fort Worth County Tax Collector place liens against property as a result of incurred expenses by the city. The first one of these is at 1612 and 1614 Hardy Street. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 1612, 1614 Hardy Street here in Conway with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone coming forward, so we have a resolution to be read for this item, it's Resolution R. 22.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to place a lien on property located at 1612 and 1640 Hardy Street in the amount of $183.74. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is the same situation, requesting that the county tax collector place a lien on property. This one is at 26 Briarwood Circle. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 26 Briarwood Circle with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone stepping forward, so we have a resolution to read for this item, it's Resolution R. 2238.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to place a lien on property located at 26 Briarwood Circle in the amount of $183.74. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting bid for Oak Street Adaptive Signal Control for the Transportation Department. And Kirk, what can you tell us?
Okay, so this, we opened bids recently on our Oak Street Adaptive Project. This will be a similar project to what we implemented on Dave Ward a few years ago, basically a, you know, a smart system for the signals on the Dave Ward, or on the Oak Street corridor. The bid, low bid amount was just under 1.2 million, it was around 50, 60,000, I think, higher than the engineer's estimate, but still within our budget. And this, we do have a, this project includes a $600,000 grant through Metro Plan as well.
Make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Ordinance number?
O. 2291.
Ninety-one, thank you. Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve the support of a grant application submitted by Metro Plan for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant for the Transportation Department, and Mr. Walden?
Yes, so this is a grant application that we as a city were actually considering undertaking, it's a result of the bipartisan infrastructure law. At the last Metro Plan Board Meeting, they said that they're working on a regional application, which we said fantastic, that means we don't have to work on this. Essentially, the Safe Streets for All and Roads Program, that is a new pot of funding that has come open at the federal level enabled by that law. The first step in that process is to apply for a planning grant, basically for safety improvement projects. So you could think about this as opportunity to get federal money for new roundabouts, would be a great example of that. And so with Metro Plan handling that, then that, basically, they do all the heavy lifting and then we can come back in later and apply for some of the projects that have been identified by that safety study. So, I think it's a great thing.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. Any further discussion? Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving the annexation of 6.7.
Excuse me, Mr. Hawkins, I'm sorry. This has been pulled, the own property, the owner of the property has asked us to pull it this time because they are still working out some details with Conway Corporation.
Very good, and we'll move on to item number six on the agenda, and this is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow a childcare facility in the O. 2 zoning district for property at 300 to 350 block east of Hogan Lane. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on, what day was this, Mr. Walden? On the 15th of August, and they voted at that time to forward this to us with a recommendation of approval, but vote was eight in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. And Mr. Walden, you want to tell us about this one as well?
Yes, this is a conditional use permit application for the Goddard School, which is a sort of a national brand, early education, early childhood education facility, they're wanting to open up one of their branches here locally on Hogan, we didn't have anybody show up in opposition to the request, the applicant was okay with the conditions that were imposed and feel that it'll be a good addition to the area, it's very compatible with that portion of Hogan.
Make a motion to grant this conditional use permit?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for a childcare facility located in 300 and 350 block of East Hogan Lane. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property at 1310 East Dave Ward Drive. Currently, it's zoned C. 2, the proposed zoning is C. 3. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their meeting on August 15th and voted eight to nothing to one, to forward this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance to read for this item, it's Ordinance O. 2292.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property at 1445 Old Military Road and 3612 Dina Lane. It presently is zoned A. 1, the requested zoning is MF. 1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on August 15th, and at that time, the Commission voted eight to O. to one, that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance to read for this item, it's Ordinance O. 2293.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property at 1445 Old Military Road and 3612 Dina Lane, from A. 1 to MF. 1. Any further discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many homeowners did you go put in?
We don't at this point, I think what they're largely looking at are duplexes, so they may end up doing sort of a duplex subdivision, or they may do duplexes all on one lot.
Thinking about a shared.
Yeah, so what we've discussed with the applicant is to essentially have rear access for duplexes that would front onto Old Military. They'll have to provide area for detention and drainage, and so, and the parcel itself is a little oddly shaped, and so there'll be some constraints that they can't maximize the amount of density on that.
Any other questions?
You mentioned at the Planning Commission, there was some people that spoke to the issues, anybody here tonight? What's the issue?
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
And I'll say that the folks that spoke at the Planning Commission, they didn't speak in opposition, they spoke to highlight the issue of safety, which when staff did a site visit, we almost got creamed, and so I definitely understand that. Yeah.
Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
This is eight to zero.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property located at 1500 and 1520 East Dave Ward Drive from I. 1, or from I. 1, the requested zoning is C. 2 and C. 3, and a portion of 1310 East Dave Ward Drive from C. 2 to C. 3. This particular request was reviewed by the Planning Commission August 15th of this year, and at that time, the Commission voted unanimously that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance to read for this, it's Ordinance O. 2294.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Do you know what the plan is?
Yeah, so this rezoning is related to the previous rezoning that was just approved to take it to C. 3. These property owners are working together in coordination, sort of the good property, they have sold part of the property to Mr. Langford, and so in reviewing this, we kind of set the eastern extent of where the Malle development is going in, that would have C. 3 uses, we said we would really like that to be sort of a hard boundary on the east side for the extent of new C. 3, and so they agreed to go C. 2 on the, just to the east of that, it'll accommodate all of their intended and planned uses. But the idea is for this to kind of, for, from the good property to the west, all the way over to here, to have sort of an interconnected development that'll have sort of commercial development, you'll be able to access from inside of Lewis Ranch through private drive, coming all the way across and then back over to here, and then where the western extent of this particular rezoning is, or close to it, will be a location for a north-south road that will go up and connect to likely some planned multifamily in the future. It's all, it's, I have to give big kudos to Mr. Langford and Mr. Good, Good family, because they're all working together in a collaborative manner to really make sure that this happens in a way that we don't create Oak Street, you know, 2.0. So we're all collectively working in collaboration to make sure that we have something that I think decades from now, we'll all be proud of.
That's great. I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have it as O. 94.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property located at 1500 and 1520 East Dave Ward Drive from I. 1, or from I. 1, the requested zoning is C. 2 and C. 3, and a portion of 1310 East Dave Ward Drive from C. 2 to C. 3. This particular request was reviewed by the Planning Commission August 15th of this year, and at that time, the Commission voted unanimously that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance to read for this, it's Ordinance O. 2294.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property located at 1500 and 1520 East Dave Ward Drive from I. 1, or from I. 1, the requested zoning is C. 2 and C. 3, and a portion of 1310 East Dave Ward Drive from C. 2 to C. 3. This particular request was reviewed by the Planning Commission August 15th of this year, and at that time, the Commission voted unanimously that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance to read for this, it's Ordinance O. 2294.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Yeah, so this rezoning is related to the previous rezoning that was just approved to take it to C. 3. These property owners are working together in coordination, sort of the good property, they have sold part of the property to Mr. Langford, and so in reviewing this, we kind of set the eastern extent of where the Malle development is going in, that would have C. 3 uses, we said we would really like that to be sort of a hard boundary on the east side for the extent of new C. 3, and so they agreed to go C. 2 on the, just to the east of that, it'll accommodate all of their intended and planned uses. But the idea is for this to kind of, for, from the good property to the west, all the way over to here, to have sort of an interconnected development that'll have sort of commercial development, you'll be able to access from inside of Lewis Ranch through private drive, coming all the way across and then back over to here, and then where the western extent of this particular rezoning is, or close to it, will be a location for a north-south road that will go up and connect to likely some planned multifamily in the future. It's all, it's, I have to give big kudos to Mr. Langford and Mr. Good, Good family, because they're all working together in a collaborative manner to really make sure that this happens in a way that we don't create Oak Street, you know, 2.0. So we're all collectively working in collaboration to make sure that we have something that I think decades from now, we'll all be proud of.
That's great. I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have it as O. 94.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
This is eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the installation of artificial turf at Conway Station Park for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Ibbotson?
This is one of the projects that was presented at the last council meeting, and we've had, we've got 750,000 pledged from the A&amp;P Commission toward this project, and we're asking the council to approve Field Turf, which is the company we've used for the Don Owen Fields and for the Conway City Colleges Park.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. This will allow us to play even after rainy days, that's big.
A lot of days that we rain out at baseball, we're playing girls softball because of the turf, so.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, O. 2297 with the emergency clause?
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero. Next is an ordinance authorizing additional personnel for the Parks Recreation Department. This position, council, will be a department head position, this is that we are looking for our director for our community center, specifically indoor and outdoor aquatics. We don't have anybody in mind for this, we will open this up if you guys approve it. Salary is in just a range at this time, but the committee felt like it was important for us as we move forward with the design of this, because we're talking about programming, which is going to be big, especially for us bringing some money, that we get someone on board who helps in the design of the facility, as well as can start working on programs with us.
I make a motion we waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance? Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
And the mercy clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero. Next is an ordinance authorizing additional personnel for the Parks Recreation Department. This position, council, will be a department head position, this is that we are looking for our director for our community center, specifically indoor and outdoor aquatics. We don't have anybody in mind for this, we will open this up if you guys approve it. Salary is in just a range at this time, but the committee felt like it was important for us as we move forward with the design of this, because we're talking about programming, which is going to be big, especially for us bringing some money, that we get someone on board who helps in the design of the facility, as well as can start working on programs with us.
I make a motion we waive the three readings?
Second.
It's CBC's intent to develop the middle track, breaking that park up into thirds. The city would retain the western third of that along where the trail would go, is proposed to go through for possibly a bike park or some additional practice fields. But the CBC's intent is to develop the rest of that into a baseball field, softball field, a track, soccer, and tennis courts. So that's their intent. And I think our intent is to enter into a long-term lease.
He just walked.
I don't know why, I'm at 6:30, so I don't know.
You're right on time.
There's a Kimbrough.
Come on up.
I don't know, I just came rather than nibble at it, so I don't know what you were talking about.
He just started it.
That y'all were buying this for 5.2 million.
We got it in the bank. Do you have questions? Did he do a good job?
Pardon me?
Tell us your vision.
Well, baseball field is the priority, as I said a couple of months ago. That's our first priority. We've already started raising money for the baseball field of about $500,000 through one grant. And it'll be about 1.2 million because we want to do a turf field, and that's the first phase without lights. And then there's three phases, and then softball will probably be next. Although, I don't know, we love leasing the fields, and they're, you know, they're adequate for us. So it really depends on which coach raises the most money first. Soccer. We do have a wrestling center planned for out there. We've been leasing for six years over in the industrial park, so we have an off-site wrestling center. We have 14 sports, 16 sports now.
Wow.
And over half of them are outdoor sports. So this would be an outdoor sports complex with the exception of the wrestling center. No, it won't, because that's not the last.
I just wanted to ask that question.
He will be back.
He will be back.
Yeah.
I had 30.
A lot of projects.
Yeah.
I had 30, the last I got from, I'm going to throw it in the bus, she's probably, Felicia said, almost 40 acres. Yeah, two-thirds.
Two-thirds instead of.
Set a one-third.
So Steve, is that enough for us to do what we want to do? If we only have seven, so we would have 17 acres.
Yes, that western third along the very western portion of the park, all the way down to, there's a maintenance building down in that far corner, all the way down to
Yeah, I had some drawings, but they came from y'all. I didn't bring them.
I make a motion to adopt, for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Before we do it, I'd like Mr. Finkenbinder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. We'll come back to that.
So just to be clear, this is a resolution expressing the intent of the city to enter into a lease agreement. We don't have the terms worked out yet. But just resolutions are often just an expression of the intent of the council. So this would authorize us to go forward with negotiations. And my understanding is that any final agreement would be presented to the council for approval.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and the final has to go to my board as well.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Shelley, no, we kept plenty of room out there for bike track.
We're going out to the airport.
That's where we're headed. Mr. Garrett.
Your resolution, R2240. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Terry. You're good.
Apologize again for being late. I knew it was always a six. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All of you up here know Shelley. Y'all all know Shelley's husband, Peter. You know, Peter's always on me about my king, and I appreciate him doing it. But he got on me the other day about Don L Ridge Road. And I told him, I said, I said, "We're not going to do anything to Don L Ridge Road till you learn how to pronounce it."
And I'm sure all here, okay, soon as we get done with that, I'll be family on there.
Thank you. Thank you, President Kimbrough. Next, we have public safety. And first up is an ordinance approving personnel changes for the city attorney's office. Mr. Finkenbinder.
So yeah, as you can see from the ordinance, this is to approve a budget-neutral addition to the city attorney's office roster, and it's a volunteer victim services coordinator position. So in January of this year, we've had a number of people volunteer for my office. There's a lot of people in our community that like what Conway's doing. And we really didn't have the ability to bring a bunch of people in. So we brought one person in, Tracy Spotwood. She's a UCA graduate, criminal justice adjunct professor, Southern New Hampshire University, retired Arkansas Community Corrections, master's degree in criminal justice. She volunteered with us in January to directly assist domestic violence victims. And the reason that's important is there's a lot of impediments to successfully prosecuting a domestic violence case, and more importantly, protecting the victims of domestic violence. There's a lot of barriers, a lot of confusion. The whole system can look bewildering.
Yes.
And so Tracy really came in there and has, for the past eight months, really allowed us to change the game when it comes to domestic violence prosecutions in Conway. She quickly contacts victims. She helps explain the whole process. She helps, really helps them overcome what would be a natural resistance to getting help. And that's really what we're talking about, is making sure that they get the help that they need and the court's protection. She even assists in making sure that they make it to court. So just really an incredible benefit to the city attorney's office. And I won't belabor the point, but I've been prosecuting on and off for 20 years, and I can tell you, domestic violence victims face a lot of obstacles to getting the help they need. And sometimes those obstacles prove fatal, and that's what we're really trying to avoid and to help them to not have that outcome. And it's easy for a woman to feel like she's all alone in the process, but people like Tracy help us to show them they're not, that we're there every step of the way. And my hope is if you approve this position, which is unpaid, that it will be the beginning of an increased volunteer effort to help victims of crime, not just in domestic violence cases.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Finkenbinder. That's tremendous. No further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, O2299. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Next, we have a resolution approving the grant applications in the middle for the public safety equipment grant program. Conway PD, Chief Tapley and Robbie Albertson.
Hello.
And we bring Robbie's name up a lot, too.
And quite honestly, this is all because of Robbie. He contacted me a couple of weeks ago about this grant and asked if the police department would be interested in applying. We sat down, talked about it. It's a state grant. There is no match to this grant. We identified some things that we would like to apply for, being electrical controlled weapons and virtual reality training in the amount of $616,000. So we are asking for your approval to apply for this grant.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the grant applications in the middle for the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Good job, Robbie, chief.
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett.
Resolution, R2241. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds for Conway PD.
We have received reimbursements for extra duty services, task force funds, and insurance proceeds, and we're just asking to appropriate these funds into the appropriate account.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. I have it as O22100.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance.